Hello, everyone. Hope you're all's year is going really well and everything's going well preparing for these AP exams. I know it's can be really stressful leading up to them, but I know it's you're probably excited to get them going soon and finishing up this year. So I see we've got, it looks like a few people in the session now. So let's see, we've got Elizabeth and Neil and Rihanna and Eshan. And Risha Cash. And yeah, and I heard that we could have up to 21 people. So I'll give it a few more minutes before we get started here. And then we'll go ahead and start talking about one of these big ideas for micro supply and demand. So I'll just give it another couple of minutes here to see if people want to trickle in. So it was pretty, a pretty fun earlier. I was thinking about it. It was just about 10 years ago that I myself was taking the principles of micro and macro courses in my first year of college. And I was, I was thinking about how, how I felt when I was first learning these topics. So it's a definitely one of those things that it's, it's pretty incredible. If you want to keep studying economics in college, how far you can go with it. And this is really setting the tone for them. All right. So I will go ahead and get started here and if we have more people join in, that's great. But I want to go ahead and introduce myself. My name is Adam Witham. I just finished my PhD in economics. I studied economics throughout my undergraduate experience and then throughout graduate school. And I took a lot of these AP exams throughout my high school career. And I want to congratulate you all for, for taking the time to do this in high school. It's absolutely incredible to be exposed to these ideas now. And especially to be coming to events like this for a Wise Ant workshop. So I want to say we're going to go ahead and get started with the session, but I want to say it like this. I've been a tutor with Wise Ant for just over a year now, and I try to have all my sessions like a conversation. So I absolutely love having questions throughout and really trying to build a conversation about it. So if at any point this evening, you all have questions, feel free to, to answer, ask them along the way before we get to the end. All right. So to start us off here, the AP micro exam is really broken into a couple of key areas. So I'm going to first kind of show you these areas and what they're about. But the exam is actually broken into six topics as we call it by the College Board. So there are the basic economic concepts when you'll be thinking of like scarcity, comparative advantage, absolute advantage. You'll then work into supply and demand, which we're going to be talking about in quite a bit of detail tonight. Which, as you can notice, based on the way the College Board treats it, and certainly the way most college faculty treat it. This is a huge component of microeconomics. So supply and demand is a significant part of the exam for the multiple choice section. And then there's all these other concepts related to competition in markets, factor markets, and then thinking about market failure as well. Such as with the case of monopoly. But how the exam is broken down? We've got the multiple choice section with 60 questions on it and taking just at two thirds of the exam waiting. So you'll have just over an hour and 70 minutes to answer these multiple choice questions. So just over a minute of question. So the way these multiple choice questions work, you're only receiving points for the exams, the questions that you answer correctly. Any missed questions, you do not lose any points. So it's going to be very important when you're, when you're doing this. Take every question very seriously, but also make sure to, to answer every single one of them. Then finally, after a little interval, you'll actually start the free response section of the exam. So the way it's broken apart is you'll have a brief 10 minute reading period. This should be your opportunity to read through the questions, see what they're all about. As well as really start planning your answers, figuring out maybe how you want to devote some time to these. So because you have exactly one hour, 60 minutes to do this, to answer three questions. You want to think about how you can allocate your time on them. So there's one long question that's going to be given a little bit more of the weight. About half of the points for the free response section. And then two shorter questions as well. So as we're going to be talking about the concepts of supply and demand tonight, you should bear in mind. Supply and demand could be heavily weighted on this exam. And it's very possible that at least one of the free response questions will involve supply and demand. So if you all take the opportunity to go onto the College Board website and see exactly some of the free response questions that are asked every year, you'll frequently find that long question that gets, that gets quite a bit of the weight. Does involve supply and demand. So when I was asked by Wise Ant to host this AP workshop for you all this evening. That's why I thought it would be so important for us to talk about it because I think it's going to bear quite a bit of the weight on the exam. So you're going to be asked questions quite possibly related to graphs. So when you think about supply and demand graphically and what it means for prices and quantities. When you think about merging these two ideas together and getting into equilibrium, which we'll be talking about very shortly. And then also thinking about shifts of these curves and what that means for equilibrium. So there's lots of different ways that they can ask about supply and demand. And that's why I want to really try to cover a lot of these with you this evening. A lot of different ways that you can see it. So to start us off with, I want to just talk about what it means to have demand. So for a demand curve, we usually say it's an indirect relationship between quantity demanded and price. So in other words, if we pick an initial point where I'm going to call it P1 and Q1, so a given price and a given quantity. And all of a sudden, the price decreases for, for a particular good. So we decrease to P2. This should increase my quantity demanded for that particular good. So all of a sudden, what it means is by a reduction in price, I see an increase in quantity. So on the flip side, if we have an increase in price, we should see a decrease in the quantity demanded. So when we think about economics and how it kind of relates to the sciences, frequently is if you're in a physics class or a chemistry class and learning about the classic laws of like thermodynamics. Thermodynamics has a lot of laws with it and there's a lot of laws of motion as well. In economics, we tend to only have two laws, supply and demand, and these are absolute concepts. So when, when I say that we have the law of demand, I want you to think that there's an inverse relationship, an indirect relationship between these two factors. But I want to also say there's a bunch of factors we have to think about with the demand curve. So I want to refer, I'm going to be toggling back and forth between these two slides quite a bit. As we think about what it means to have demand for a particular good or a particular service in the world. So for this particular demand curve, this could be, say, the demand for fish. Or it could be the demand for textbooks or the demand for water. It could be a demand for any particular good in the world. And it means holding all factors constant. This is what we see as the relationship between price and quantity. So what it means to actually have a factor shift or a factor determining demand is what we're going to be talking about now. And I'm going to be defining these as simply as possible so that you can try to remember these on the AP exam. So first thing I remember I do when I'm taking an exam, I try to come up with a quick like acronym, a quick way to remember these things. So actually, when I'm remembering demand, I try to do P-I-P-E-T. So like for those of you that have taken AP chemistry as well, it's like pipette. So the first one of these factors is population. So if we see, for instance, more people being born over time, that can increase my demand for a particular good. It could also be the case if we have people moving into the United States, for example. And we have, say, more immigration occurring and there's a greater population here now. That can also increase the demand for a good. So when we're thinking about what does this actually mean along the demand curve? We now have a given price and quantity, say for water. If we have an increase in demand, that can totally shift the curve outward. And result in a total increase in demand. So sometimes you'll hear this referred to as a shift right or an increase in demand. So that's driven by an increase in population. So if there's more people in an area, their demand increases. Another one of these factors I want to think about is income. So if we say, for instance, that people have more income, more expendable income that they can go and purchase goods and services with. That can also increase their demand. So for instance, if I was given a salary increase and I have twice as much money as I did before. I can certainly go and buy a lot more stuff with it. So it's great. But another factor that often can be a challenge for, for a lot of textbooks in communicating this information is taxes matter a lot too. So one of the classic examples that college professors love trying to challenge students with is saying, well, what if we increase taxes on income, say from 22% to 27%? And we had an income tax. What does that mean? Well, if I have an income tax that increased, now I won't be able to spend as much as I would have before. So I had a question here in the chat. What time will this Zoom be over? So we're planning to go until just about 7:55 is what I'm planning right now. So I'll plan to have some time at the end for questions in case we don't want to have them throughout. But also I can take other questions maybe that you all have about microeconomics and also preparing for that, the AP exam overall. But yeah, 7:55 is what we're planning now because Wise Ant's hosting a lot of other really great sessions for you all related to these AP exams. So back to income and taxes on income. So if we see the case that, yeah, taxes are increasing for people. That means their income is essentially decreasing or how much they can go and spend on something. So when, when I say income, I also want you to remember that taxes can be really relevant for consumers as well. Another situation that we have is prices of related goods. Being compliments and substitutes. So what do I mean? Classic, classic examples, these are goods that usually go with each other as well with something as a compliment. So for instance, every morning when I wake up, I absolutely love to have a cup of coffee. But I always have to have my sugar in it. So for instance, whenever I go to the grocery store and I'm purchasing my groceries, I tend to always purchase coffee beans and sugar together. Okay? So when, when I'm thinking about what if it's the case that the price of coffee decreases? Well, how does that affect my demand for sugar? Well, if the price of coffee goes down, I might buy more coffee. But if I'm having more coffee, I'm also going to be buying more sugar as well when I'm at the store. So what we should see happen is an increase in demand for coffee. I mean, I'd increase in demand for sugar and increase in the quantity demanded for coffee. So notice how I said prices of related goods. Prices of a good itself will not affect their demand. It will affect the quantity demanded. So we've said compliments. These, so the classic examples you'll always see are coffee and sugar. You may see the case of like peanut butter and jelly. These are classic things consumed together. It could be the case of, I saw on an AP exam question years ago, sunscreen and flip flops. So if I'm preparing to go on spring break or summer break to the beach. These are things I might always consume or purchase together. So these are what are compliments. Substitutes, however, these are goods that I'm going to choose one or the other, but not both. So for instance, I like coffee in the mornings. But if I was just wanting some caffeine, I might easily, just as easily drink tea. So for instance, if the price of coffee increases, meaning coffee's more expensive. Then that might affect my tea consumption. So as long as I get caffeine, I can choose either one. So if coffee's more expensive, I will choose to purchase and consume more tea. So an increase in the price of coffee increases the demand for tea. So therefore, if the price of coffee decreases, my demand for tea decreases. So these are substitute goods. So things you'll frequently see with this. It could be the case of hot dogs and hamburgers. It could be the case of coffee and tea. It could be the case of Coca-Cola and Pepsi. So these are goods in which people have an inverse relationship to each other with, for these goods. They'll choose to consume one or the other as substitutes. All right. So the fourth one is expectations. And this is a really kind of broad term that economists love to use. And it really refers to how we interpret things about the future, especially with things of uncertainty or what we maybe think is going to happen or something that hasn't happened yet. All right. So a classic example with this, I don't know if any of you by chance have ever managed to go through a hurricane or an incredibly bad ice storm or snowstorm. But if you know that you have a huge hurricane coming or a snowstorm, ice storm, you might frequently hear people wanting to stock up on supplies just prior to the, the weather event. So what does that mean? So if I know that a hurricane's coming and it, for instance, might knock out my power, I might want to go and purchase a lot of bottled water today. I might want to go and purchase a lot of batteries and canned food. So like soups or crackers and things that I can readily store like in a pantry. So that when there's a lot of power outages and trees knocked down, I maybe don't have to leave my house for a while. So if I expect, if I think that this hurricane's coming, that might increase my demand for bottled water today. Okay. So if I'm thinking that something is going to occur in the future, that can affect how I consume something today. So this is all built into that very general idea of expectations. This fifth one, the final one is on taste and preferences. And what taste and preferences is, is just generally how people prefer or like a particular good or a service over time. So frequently, one of, one of the examples we love to use is whenever there's some new trend or some new style that society really likes, that's usually attributed to taste and preferences. So for instance, when I was growing up, there were these toys called Furbies. So all of a sudden, everyone had to have a Furbie. And the demand for Furbies could have increased because of taste and preference increases. It was also the case when, when I talked to my parents or my grandparents, that they talk of pet rocks. It was the case that people used to go and keep these literal rocks or stones as pets and treat them like pets. So that was again attributed to taste and preferences, the demand for those things over time and how that could have increased. So again, just to summarize real quick, with the factors of demand, I'm going to say that there's, there's five of them that you can just quickly write these out. And it's, you can remember the acronym pipette. Population, income, prices of related goods, expectations, taste and preferences. Okay. So yeah, quick question for you all. Suppose we're considering the market for pineapples and the price of pineapples increases. Does that affect demand? So I'll give you a second to think about this and feel free to, to answer it in the chat. So this, this is a question that frequently will be asked. Yes, demand increases is what someone says. So let me ask this. Which factor of demand would you say this is then? If you said, if I said, we're considering pineapples, the price of pineapples increases, does it affect demand? So I'll just show you these factors again here. Population, income, prices of related goods, expectations and taste and preferences. And I'm reading now in the chat, yeah, quantity demanded decreases, quantity demand. Exactly right. The demand for pineapples doesn't fundamentally change whenever the price of pineapples itself, the own price changes. It will affect how many I purchase at the store, but it doesn't suddenly change how I view pineapples. It doesn't make me suddenly really want to go and buy pineapples a lot more or really change kind of my, my preferences, my, my innate feelings about pineapples. So when we say it, does it affect demand? The answer is no. Quantity demanded is extremely different from demand itself. So if the price of pineapples increases, the quantity demanded decreases, not demand. So in other words, the entire demand curve is not going to be shifting. We're simply just going to have a movement along it. So going back to our original graph here. This is again, going back to if the price right now is at, say, P1. And the price of it changes, I can have a movement along the demand curve. Because people's taste and preferences aren't changing, people's incomes levels aren't changing. People's expectations aren't changing. It's just the price that's changing, which will affect the quantity demanded in the end. So again, just showing it to you graphically real quick. A change in quantity demanded is not going to move the entire curve. A shift in one of those factors. So if we have a change in population, expectations, tastes and preferences. This is what can actually move the entire curve. So what it means is if I have a given price, people would be willing to purchase more of it. So kind of tracing this out over time. It also means at a given quantity, Q1, if I trace it up to the new demand curve, people would be willing to pay a higher price for it. So this is a common problem that you should expect to see on the AP exam. They're going to try to challenge you by asking if demand changes or quantity demand changes. And if it's the price of a particular good, I mean, the, the good itself that they're asking about, it's only going to be a quantity change. So that's a great, great question just to practice with. So we've talked a little bit about demand. Now what I want to do is talk a little bit about supply. So on the flip side, we said demand is a indirect relationship. Supply is going to be this direct relationship. So what does it mean? It means that if I increase my price, I'm going to see an increase in the quantity supplied. So for example, one of the things we, we love to think about at least for producers is what, how do they know to produce more? Well, if people are, if, if it's the case that the price is increasing, there's certainly kind of the incentive, the encouragement to go and supply more in the market, produce more and increase your quantity supplied. So thinking about this, for instance, with the start of COVID, COVID-19, we saw the case that generally the price of toilet paper, paper towels, cleaning supplies was increasing. So what did that mean? A lot of places wanted to start also producing these things. So for instance, you heard of clothing companies wanting to all of a sudden start making masks. You heard of lots of beverage companies, juice companies wanting to all of a sudden start trying to produce cleaning supplies. So it was the case that if the price increases, there's incentive to go and try to produce more, so increase the quantity supplied. So this is again, that other law that you'll hear about in economics, the law of supply says that with an increase in price, there will be an increase in the quantity supplied. Keteris paribus, meaning holding all of these factors constant. But just as we had factors for demand, now we're also going to have factors of supply. Now, these ones are a little bit trickier to remember because there's slightly more of them. But these generally are going to be affecting the production of a particular good or service. So just as in demand, we had the population in an area. For supply, we have the number of producers or the number of suppliers. So for instance, if we see the case that more factories are opening up, more businesses, that's the number of producers increasing. This can result in an increase in supply for a particular good. So for instance, if we see a lot more growers of apples, this can increase the supply of apples. Okay. So prices of inputs. So inputs, I'm meaning when I, when I'm growing apple trees, for instance, in an orchard. There's a lot of things that actually going into producing an individual apple. And by that, I mean, there's actually a price of water because I've got to water probably these trees every day. There's a price of soil that, that I have to always use, maybe fertilizer. I may have to pay to go and keep the bugs off and all the insects off of these apples. So there's a lot of factors that can go into producing apples. So when I talk about the price of inputs, this is something that goes into producing a final product for a given firm, for a given producer. Okay. So if we see the case that all these inputs are increasing, that can affect the market supply in the end. As far as worker productivity, this is directly related to how skilled, how educated, how knowledgeable people are. So for instance, in the United States, we're very lucky to have an extremely well-educated workforce. So this often allows us to go and produce quite a lot of just about any type of good or service. Where one of the things that really drives that is we have a large part of the population that's college educated and has gone to graduate school or has gone to professional schools. So for instance, with trying to think of electricians and plumbers, tradesmen, these are individuals who have gone through schooling to become very skilled at their profession, at what they do. So whenever you see the case that people are more productive with their time, we should be able to increase supply as well. All right. This fourth one, technology is closely related to this idea of productivity, sometimes depending on which textbook you might be using. Though they sometimes like combining these things together. But technology can often refer to the resources that we use in manufacturing. So for instance, if I have access to computers and I have access to a lot of mechanization, this might allow me to produce a lot more as opposed to if I had to hand produce everything. So for instance, with the 1920s in the US, when we developed the assembly line, for instance, with Ford and trying to manufacture cars, we were all of a sudden able to produce cars like we'd never had before and produce lots of other goods that we hadn't had before on that level. We were fundamentally able to increase supply dramatically for just about any good and service. So this especially happened around the cities of like New York and Chicago, Pittsburgh, that we saw technology really driving these increases in supply for markets. Fifth one is on weather. And this one is especially when I, when I say weather, we're talking about how a particular event like a tsunami or a wildfire could certainly go and affect how much can be produced. So for instance, in the past couple of years, it's been heavily talked about with wildfires in California. So for instance, affecting a lot of grapes and a lot of crops and a lot of production of agricultural products. If we see wildfires really destroying a lot of crops, this can decrease the supply of them. So for instance, the supply of grapes might have decreased. So that, that entire market can be affected as a result of, of weather. So again, this could be related to snowstorms, really freezing crops. It could be the case of having a flood or a tsunami go and wipe out a lot of plants and, and villages. Or it could be the case of something like an earthquake even, going and destroying factories. So finally, this other factor of supply is with corporate taxes or business taxes. So for instance, if we want to increase taxes on a particular type of firm or a particular market, this might affect how many producers continue to stay in that market. So for instance, the more we want to tax a given type of producer, supply might decrease. As some people will say, I'm not going to choose to produce anymore. I'm not going to continue to operate my business. So these six factors overall will affect the supply in a market and can shift it fundamentally. So when we combine these ideas of supply and demand together, we get to where it gets really exciting, equilibrium. So with equilibrium, we're saying this is an occurrence when quantity supplied is going to be equal to quantity demanded in a market. is going to be equal to quantity demanded in a market. So it also has a couple other names, we call it market clearing conditions, market clearing status. And then it can also be said as having no excess supply or no excess demand. So all these things really mean the same thing. But it's getting at the idea that quantity supplied equals the quantity demanded. So I'm going to show it to you on a graph now. And then we'll refer back to what that means with quantity supply and quantity demanded. So frequently, if you have your textbooks or had it drawn in class. It will show demand and supply together. So where supply is having that direct positive relationship between price and quantity. Demand is having that negative relationship, so with a decrease in price, we have an increase in the quantity demanded. And all of a sudden, if we see the intersection point of supply and demand, this is what we call equilibrium. So it has equilibrium price called P star and equilibrium quantity, what we're going to call Q star. So when I said earlier that we had market clearing conditions, no access supply, no access demand. This is because at this given price, quantity supplied. So where the red curve would drop down, this is quantity supplied. And where the blue curve would drop down, quantity demanded would be the same. Meaning quantity supplied is exactly equal to the quantity demanded for this given market. So what equilibrium is actually telling us is we have coordination in a market. Okay. So what I want to do now with you all is I want to work through some practice problems. Multiple choice problems that you could very easily expect to see as similar type questions on the AP exam. So I want to work through two examples that I've created first off, and I've actually given to my students before. And then I'll work through a question with you all directly from the college board. And that's, that can give you kind of a similar idea of what you might expect with this. So this first question, suppose we've got a situation where income taxes in the United States decrease. How would that go and affect the market for automobiles? So when I say this, immediately what you should be thinking is if I have income taxes. And they're changing, so I'm saying they're decreasing. That may affect one of my two curves, supply or demand. So that's the first thing you want to think about with this. And once I think, I can think, all right, if I have a supply curve moving or I have a demand curve moving. How would that go and affect this picture that we've drawn? So for instance, with equilibrium. And I have an increase in demand. So you can almost kind of imagine drawing a demand curve at a higher level. So I can, I think I can actually annotate it here for us. So if this is my new demand curve, that means that equilibrium price and equilibrium quantity have now increased as a result of an increase in demand. If I see demand decrease, this can result in a lower equilibrium price. And a lower equilibrium quantity. If I have an increase in supply. This can result in a decrease in equilibrium price and an increase in equilibrium quantity. And then finally, if I have a decrease in supply. This can result in a higher equilibrium price and a lower equilibrium quantity. So I'm going to show you at the very end of the session, a way that I like, we're always remembering this. But that's what you should be trying to do with these sorts of multiple choice questions. Is trying to draw a little graph for yourself and think about ultimately which of these curves is shifting. All right, so I'll let you all take a look at this question for another minute. And see if, when you won't get it, if you want to go ahead and put it in the chat. Which, which one of these answer choices you think it is? And we'll talk about why. All right, I'm seeing some answers starting to come in. All right, so the answer is A. So an increase in equilibrium price and an increase in equilibrium quantity. So why might that be? If I see, for instance, the case that income taxes are changing. I should be instantly thinking that can affect people's income. This is one of those factors of demand. So for instance, if income taxes are decreasing. Now it's the case that people have more income, more money that they can go and spend on goods and services like automobiles. So if we ever see a decrease in income taxes, I would expect demand to increase for cars, for automobiles. So thinking about this, this would increase equilibrium price and increase equilibrium quantity. So what I would always recommend is when you're working through the multiple choice section of the AP micro exam. You should try to draw out the demand curves and draw out your equilibrium. So for instance, if I have an increase in demand, in other words, I'm shifting it to the right. This is going to increase my price and increase my quantity in equilibrium. Okay, so that's one question. Now I want to work through another one with you all. All right, so now we're going to suppose there's a snowstorm in Iowa. And it's going to freeze all the wheat fields. So how would this affect the market for wheat? So I'll give you all another minute to look at that there. And then just like before, if you want to put it, put your answer in your, in the chat as you all start, start to figure it out. All right, I'm seeing some, some different answers now, so all right, so this is going to be a good one for us to talk about. So before I go and show you all the answer. Let me ask this, based on this information about a snowstorm. Freezing the wheat fields, what do you think is happening? Which, which one of my things is, is changing? Is it supply or is it demand? I'm reading a lot of supply. Okay, good. So if I'm seeing the case that I have this snowstorm come, come into the area. And it's going to freeze all the crops, that's going to decrease my supply. So if I have a decrease in my supply. This is going to make all existing wheat, meaning that the wheat that didn't happen to freeze, it's now going to be really expensive. So if we might expect the case where bread is going to be really expensive after this. Or anything that basically wheat is made off of, it's going to be really expensive. But there's going to be a decrease in supply of wheat. Meaning there's less of it out there and what remains is going to be more expensive. So showing this to you all graphically, what does all this mean? It's the case that I have a supply decrease. Now this is something I really want, want to, to stress. This is considered a supply decrease. Just because it looks like on the graph, it's at a higher point. That does not mean it, it was an increase. What I want you to do to always think about whether it's an increase or a decrease. Is I want you to follow a particular price out to the vertical axis. So meaning if I have my original supply curve for wheat, I have my demand curve for wheat. And I have my original equilibrium price and quantity. What it means to actually have a decrease in supply. Is a point where there's going to be less quantity transacted. At that original price. So now I can trace up my new curve, my new supply curve from that point. All right, so this is what's going to be considered a decrease in supply from that ice storm. Again, from that factor of being weather. So now what I want to do is I'm going to give you all a question from the college board itself. So this is one, we can, we can take it a little bit further. And start, I start to think exactly in their terms. So they asked the question, which of the following occurs if the price of oranges is below equilibrium price? All right, so again, think about your equilibrium. You've got supply and demand intersecting and all of a sudden, we're considering just a price below that. What does that mean? Yeah, so this, this one probably will, will take a little bit longer to work through. If you, if you're trying to trace it out with pen and paper there. But yeah, when you come up with it, just feel free to put it in the chat. Okay, all right, so let's go ahead and start talking about this question. So this is, this is a tricky question, especially if you, if you don't draw a graph. So my first advice is if I was working this out myself. It's going to really help to draw some sort of graph with supply and demand of oranges. And thinking about an equilibrium price. And then what I want to do is we're saying the price of oranges is below that equilibrium. So I just want to pick just some arbitrary price below it. And then see kind of where my supply and demand curves are. So the answer for this is the quantity demanded of oranges is greater than the quantity supplied. So I'm going to show it to you all in graph and we're going to talk about this now. So normally, if I have a given market for oranges, I have my supply curve. I have my demand curve and I have my equilibrium price and quantity. But if I say, all right, let's suppose oranges were transacting at, say, $4 a pound. And I'm now picking just some arbitrary price below it. So let's say $3 a pound for, for oranges. And what does this mean? It means that now all of a sudden, my quantity supplied is not equal to the quantity demanded. In other words, they're like out of sync, out of coordination with each other. So what does this mean? So tracing this price out to my supply curve and to my demand curve. I see that my quantity supplied is less than my quantity demanded. So for, for those of you who went through the, all of the AP micro course, you may have talked about these things called price ceilings and price floors. Well, this isn't necessarily what's going to be considered a, say, price ceiling. But at least in terms of a graph, it might be really similar to it. So we're just thinking about some point below equilibrium, which will then make it so that the quantity supplied is less than the quantity demanded. So looking back to this question. If the price of oranges is below equilibrium price. The quantity demanded is greater than the quantity supplied. So that, that's what that all is going to translate to. Where I saw a couple, a couple of people in the chat said that the quantity supplied of oranges is greater than the quantity sold. So let's think about that for a second. If the quantity supplied is here. Where it, this price, we intersect or hit the, the supply curve. We see quantity supplied less than equilibrium. When we say the quantity supplied is greater than the quantity sold. If this is the case that all, this is all that's being supplied in the market. Even though people would be willing to purchase this amount. All that will be transacted is the quantity supplied itself. So this is actually all that will be sold in the market because that's all that was produced. So in this case, people would be willing to purchase more at that given price. It's that the producers just aren't currently willing to produce it. In other words, and it's only through an increase in price that they will have a greater incentive to go and produce more. In other words, increase the quantity supplied back to where we were originally at equilibrium. So this is a challenging question, but it's one that I wanted to at least show you all how the college board might try to think about this. So to do these types of questions, again, draw your graphs out. Try to write out the factors of supply, factors of demand. And then think about ultimately, if you have a shift in these curves, what does it mean for equilibrium? So to answer that for you all, I create always this helpful table. I think it's helpful to try to remember exactly how this works. So how I do this. On, on my matrix that I create here, on one side, I always create demand and I create supply. And then on the other side, I go and have increases and decreases. So then what does it mean? It means the internal values, the inside of it, I can actually go and understand what's happening to price and quantity in equilibrium. So for a demand increase, I have both a increase in equilibrium price and an increase in equilibrium quantity. For a demand decrease, I have a decrease in equilibrium price and a decrease in equilibrium quantity. So what does this mean? It means that whatever direction the demand curve moves, so if it's a demand increase. Price and quantity also increase. If demand decreases, price and quantity also decrease. So the equilibrium effects on price and quantity will move with whatever direction the demand curve moves. All right, now I want to think about supply. If I see the case that we have a supply increase. That means price is going to be falling in equilibrium and quantity is going to be increasing in equilibrium. And if I see the case that supply is decreasing. Now it's going to be the case that price is increasing and quantity is decreasing in equilibrium. So creating a little table like this on an exam can be really helpful. So that especially if you're going into the multiple choice section, it might be helpful to refer back to this. So when I often was taking my AP micro exam and principles of micro exams in college. I frequently tried to write out tables like this so that I could easily remember exactly how all of these, these factors happened. And how their changes affected equilibrium. And I tried to very easily write down on the exam, my factors of supply and demand. So my advice to you for the AP micro exam is immediately when, when you turn that first page and start the multiple choice section. So since you're given 70 minutes to do it. I would try to create a little table like this and write out your factors. Because as, as it's going really quick, the exam and you're maybe getting caught up in some particular questions. It'll always be nice then to refer back to this. So that it'll help you to de-stress during it and really try, try to remember these basic ideas. Because going back to what I said at the beginning, supply and demand is a big part of the exam. And these are kind of very easy points that you can pick up early on. And then also, it's very possible that some of the free response questions could be related to these ideas. So that's why when I was picking a topic tonight for you all. So that's why when I was picking a topic tonight for you all, I thought this would be so important to talk about. And I see something, something in the chat now. So let's see. How much time do you think we should spend on average on each question? Especially for digital exams, if we can't go back and forth on multiple choice questions, yeah. So given that, so this, this is a very interesting, different year with all the, the digital exams, because they, they all used to be done hard copy on paper. Thinking about this, on average, you want to be doing these about one a minute for multiple choice questions. So if you have 70 minutes to do 60 questions, you need to be working on these about one every minute. Bearing that in mind, questions like this with supply and demand, these, these may not take long. So you, basically if you, if you can quickly figure out which of the curves is moving and in which direction, you can do these in 20 seconds. So I would highly recommend where, where I would say you should take your time is questions related to say perfect competition, questions related to monopoly, maybe some questions related to some game theory related to Nash equilibrium and pricing strategies. So, so places that it may take a little bit longer for the math, if you have to work out any math, that's where you really want to really take your time. If it'll take drawing out some, some, some graphs or really writing through the math to think about it, that's where you really want to spend your time. So I would say on average, one a minute for these questions, but also bear in mind the faster you can do these early questions related to just basic ideas of say opportunity cost scarcity and then supply and demand factors, the more time you can spend on later parts of the course. Great question. All right, other questions? Okay, not, not seeing any others here and I'm keeping track of time. So right at 7:55 right now. But I really enjoyed talking with you all about these ideas tonight of supply and demand. And I wanted to let you know that I think in the chat as well as about the session on Eventbrite, you all have my information as a tutor. I'd be happy to tutor you all, especially if, for those of you that are starting, say, other economics classes in maybe college next year, or if you really want to keep learning about economics, I'm more than happy to tutor you in it. And then the other thing is, Wizian's been having a lot of these incredible workshops building up to the AP exams. Actually tomorrow night, I'm going to be hosting another one of these sessions related to the AP macro economics exam. So we're going to be covering the ideas of opportunity costs, trade-offs and also the ideas of comparative advantage and absolute advantage. So that's what we're going to dig into tomorrow night. So feel free to, to join again and I love, I love to work through some more problems with you all. So I have a few more things here in the chat, so. Yes, absolutely. So please show the first slide again. So as far as the exam overview, was that the slide you wanted? Topics one, yep. There you go. So with this, supply and demand is going to be between a fifth and a quarter of the multiple choice exam. So it's quite, quite a hefty portion is related to that. And certainly, when you talk about ultimately price controls, it can be heavily related again. So like when, when you talk about the role of government, price ceilings, price floors, it's all getting back to supply and demand. So you're going to see these ideas steadily be popping up throughout it. And then again, so let's see, another question. What are the main topics you would suggest to study the most? So great question. I mean, so with, with this, supply and demand is very, even though they say 20 to 25% of the multiple choice section will be related to it, it's going to be appearing throughout the role of government section with respect to price controls as well as possibly production and costs as well. So it can be popping up steadily throughout the exam, these ideas, they're going to keep coming back. So I would make sure you can always write out your five factors of demand, your six factors of supply and really be comfortable with how these, these factors can change and shift one of the curves. So that's what I would recommend the most. Okay, so I think we're going to go ahead and wrap it up here. So again, I want to thank you all again so much for attending this session. I want to wish you all the absolute best of luck in taking this AP micro exam. And I also will be sharing the slides with these. So I'll, I want to have those available for you all so that you can go back and review these as well. So check, make sure to check the links out here in the chat for more information about signing up for more of these AP sessions like tomorrow and when we cover comparative advantage, absolute advantage, and then also the idea of trade-offs and opportunity costs. So hope to see you all again tomorrow if you all are taking the AP macro exam. All right. Have a good night, everyone.